Good evening, I'd like to call and order this regular meeting of the Round Lake Area Board of Education at 7:00 PM in the John T. McGee Cafeteria. If I can get started first with a roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnity?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
Alright, everyone, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all, and first up is an approval of the meeting agenda as listed. If I can get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Klingler. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Negrete McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries, we have an approved agenda, and first up on that is communications to the Board, and that would be the budget update when Dr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Board of Education Community, thank you for being here. Normally, I don't stand at the podium when I'm giving presentations, but given the location of the screen, just makes it a little bit easier. We have a significant amount of information to share during this evening's presentation, and the goal is to provide full and complete transparency, and as much information as possible to the community, our taxpayers, our staff, and our families. While I don't plan on reading every specific slide, I will make every effort to be very deliberate and patient as I walk through the slide deck. This evening, the purpose of the presentation is to share details about the budget cycle in the state of Illinois, to provide clarification regarding roles and responsibilities specific to the budget development process, to explain what happened that initially impacted the FY25 school year budget, which ultimately had a compounding effect for the current fiscal year, which is 2526, to explain why the budget shortfall exists, how it happened, and most importantly, to share a variety of strategies to ensure that it will not happen again. Additionally, to anybody in the community I've offered this, I will meet with families, I will meet with groups of people, individuals, after the presentation if you want to discuss this further, it's an open invitation. This specific slide is very important, and will be shared at the very front end of the presentation, as well as the back end of the presentation. These are what I would consider to be the three most significant takeaways for the viewer, and I will be going through these in more detail throughout the presentation. First, the FY2425 budget was significantly underestimated in staff salaries and special education costs, leading to incorrect assumptions, uninformed decisions, and negative impacts on both the current and next fiscal year. But I want to be very clear, money is not missing, fraud has not occurred, money has not been stolen, and we can account for the budget shortfall. In summary, the district is and was used too much money from its savings account to operate. So I'm going to say that again. The primary issue is that we used too much money from our savings account, our emergency fund, to operate the school district, and we cannot and will not continue to do that. Additionally, I'd like to share a couple of important pieces of information, that we have not cut transportation. I think when something like this occurs in the community, it's very easy to draw conclusions that may not be accurate. We've had some issues with current bus routing software, and that will be corrected, so if anybody in the audience is having trouble with transportation, please contact the Transportation Department. And additionally, our school board members live within the school district boundaries in either currently or have had children in the school district. I also want to communicate that several enhancements have already been implemented specific to the budget process, which includes stronger system controls, improved budget-to-actual monitoring with historical comparisons, increasing transparency through dashboards and quarterly reports. In summary, the manner in which we present the budget information moving forward will significantly increase the number of eyes on the budget process, thus allowing anyone currently working in the district, or even members of the community at large to see how we are trending budget-wise, and if any red flags should be raised. That's actually what we want. The budget cycle in the state of Illinois is not the easiest to work with, in that we have to make financial decisions often prior to having a clear picture of what our revenue looks like for a given year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1 through June 30, and the process includes having the proposed budget available for the public to view, which includes a formal hearing and notice 30 days prior to it being adopted. In Round Lake District 116, our largest funding source is evidence-based funding, and we usually find out what our allocation is sometime in August or September of each fiscal year. The challenge that poses is that is usually five to six months after staffing decisions are made, which constitutes the largest percentage of our expenditures. I'd also like to highlight that evidence-based funding was originally and is now designed to go into the Education Fund, the primary purpose of which is to support students and their learning. This slide is designed to show the viewer key dates as part of the budget cycle in the state of Illinois. During this evening's meeting, we actually, the Board will actually see the tentative budget, and then by the end of September, which you see on the slide, September 30, the final budget will be adopted by the School Board. Within 30 days of that adoption, we have to file the budget with the county clerk and post it on the district website, and that reminds me, every single document that you're going to see tonight, the community, is available for you to review, it's all listed in public, and all of the newly implemented strategies, including our budget documents and our treasures reports, will be available to anybody on the district website. Once the 30-day filing process is completed, we are required to submit to the state of Illinois our budget. It is a manual process, and we are not allowed to submit a budget that includes a deficit unless a deficit reduction plan is included. That's very important, and I'll refer to that later. By June 30 of each year, we adopt and submit an amended budget if needed. Locally, meaning in Round Lake, we start the budget process eight to nine months prior to approval in September. There are a variety of factors that go into building a budget, which includes but is not limited to things like student needs and programming, revenue projections, anticipated staffing levels and benefit costs, compliance-related matters, as well as long-term stability considerations. Each year when we build a budget, and because a significant part of our budget expenses relate to staffing and personnel, in other words, the number of people we have in the district, we have a very strong positive history of collaborating with the Education Association of Round Lake, which is our local teachers' union. As I referenced earlier, we usually show initial expenditure and reduction considerations with the School Board nine months ahead of when they're required to approve a budget. As we get closer to the approval date in September of each fiscal year, the budget becomes more final, and over time, less changes are made or recommended as we get closer to the approval date. Once the budget is approved by the School Board in September, it must be formally submitted electronically to the Illinois State Board of Education on a spreadsheet that we download, which requires a manual submission. It also requires that if we are going to submit a deficit budget as part of the process, it must be accompanied with a deficit reduction plan. That's the second time I mention that, and that's very important, and I'll share more about that later on. There are multiple roles and responsibilities at the local level connected to the budget development process. School Board members who are elected, are elected, and are not paid for their services on the Board, approve the formal budget, provide high-level oversight, hold the leadership team accountable for budget management, while also ensuring that each fiscal year's budget decisions align with their strategic direction, that of the full Board. The superintendent's role is to ensure that all budget-related financial decisions are in alignment with the strategic direction of the School Board, as well as our strategic plan. The superintendent is also responsible for ensuring that the budget process complies with Illinois State Board of Education requirements, as well as monitoring the long-term financial stability of the school district. In some districts, generally smaller districts, the superintendent may also act as the chief financial officer in serving both roles. That is not the case in Round Lake, as we are in the top 5% of school districts in the entire state in terms of our size. As referenced in the last slide, most school districts have a complete and distinctly separate position in the role of a business manager/treasurer. The responsibility of a school district business manager is to lead the creation of the budget, formally submit the budget, manages and assesses the daily financial operations and cash flow of the budget, and ensures budget accuracy. Further, it is the responsibility of the business manager to ensure fiscal compliance, to plan ahead, and to communicate with the School Board, and the community, various budget trends, whether they be good or bad. The business manager is required to have a chief school business official certification due to the specialty nature of the position. Further, a school business manager usually serves as the district treasurer, which has to be formally approved by the Board of Education. The next few slides are designed to support the fact that the district has a strong history of sound fiscal management and oversight. You will see on the slide at the top, we have had for quite some time a significant amount of money in our cash reserve/savings account, and for reference, our operating budget is approximately $150 million. So you can see in FY2019, $46 million, 2020, $45 million, 2021, $48 million, 2022, $50 million, $55 million, and so on. Every school district is given a financial profile score, and there are several factors that go into determining that financial profile score. They are listed on this slide and include things like expenditure-to-ratio, days of cash on hand, as well as a percentage of short and long-term debt. You will see on the slide that since 2019, five out of the last six years, we have earned the highest financial rating possible. The one year we did not earn the highest financial rating, we received the second highest financial rating. And if my memory is correct, that year, we made, we were intentional at doing some capital work, using some of our reserves to improve our facilities. For the last 13 years, we have earned the Certificate of Excellence for Financial Reporting. Round Lake School District 116 earned this recognition by preparing a full annual comprehensive financial report, as opposed to the basic version, which contains less information, and we also demonstrated practices that comply with generally accepted accounting principles and Association of School Business Official reporting standards. Our process and information was independently peer-reviewed by the National Association of School Business Officials, and consensus is needed by the reviewers in order to earn the Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting. It also represents that we communicate and report information in a manner that's considered top-tier relative to our financial transparency and accountability. You will see here that we have six straight years of not a single finding in any of our financial audits. School districts are required to engage in financial audits by law. Generally speaking, a finding is where the district's financial practices and records or controls do not fully comply with laws regarding accounting standards or best practices, and it signals a weakness or error that should be corrected to improve accuracy, compliance, or internal controls. Given the financial, the fiscal year ended in June, we have not yet completed our FY25 audit, but you can see we have a history of being fiscally responsible related to the audits. We also wanted to highlight that our School Board has and continues to be very mindful of attempting to save taxpayers' money when possible. In fiscal years 2020, '23, and '24, the district was awarded the Property Tax Relief Grant by the State Board of Education in Illinois, which allowed us to reduce our local property tax levy through a tax abatement, which effectively saved the taxpayers over $12 million for these three fiscal years. So we were able to lower the tax levy by $3 million, $4 million, and $4.5 million in 2023 and '24. Early in the presentation, you heard me reference the fact that we have a history of having healthy fund balances or cash reserves. A simpler way of thinking about that is a savings account. In simple terms, our fund balance, cash reserves, is our savings account and emergency fund. Despite the significant budget error to which we are referencing this evening, we still have healthy fund balances, but it is in the wrong area. This slide is designed to show the viewer that yes, we have a significant amount of money in cash reserves, but we cannot use cash reserves from any account to pay salaries or benefits. You'll see that any of the items in green on this bar graph are cash reserves to the positive, and those in red are where we are operating in a deficit. The Education Fund, which is all the way to the left in red, is the account in which we pay teacher salaries and benefits, which is one of the reasons we are currently facing the challenge being discussed this evening. This is the same slide, but also is designed to show you, for example, in the middle is the Transportation Fund. We are unable to transfer money in the Transportation Fund to pay teacher salaries or benefits, it can only be used to pay for buses, fuel, and drivers. Last example, the Food Service Fund is even more restricted because it comes from the federal government and can only be used to support and improve school meals. This slide is designed to show the viewer various legal references and restrictions regarding how specific operating funds may or may not be spent, including some limited ability to loan money from one account to the other. Again, this slide deck is available online, and those links are active for your review. I wanted to spend a minute briefly highlighting the audit that we are required to go through. Generally, these are completed seven months after the fiscal year ends, they verify financial record accuracy, we have to comply with the Illinois School Code and the Illinois State Board of Education requirements, grants, rules, and regulations. It also does assess internal controls to prevent errors, misuse, or fraud. It provides a layer of transparency to the Board, community, and state agencies, and it supports decision-making with findings and recommendations. Now, what does an audit not do? It is not designed to detect every instance where regularity occurs. It is not the job of the auditors to assess our educational programs in Round Lake or to provide direction regarding what the Board priorities should be and how we should be spending our money. So what happened? In simple terms, the former business manager underbudgeted when building the FY25 budget. Specifically, the two areas that were underestimated included staff salaries as well as special education, specifically tuition placement. Because of this, the Board of Education reviewed and approved a budget in August and September of 2024 that did not fully match the district's actual financial needs. Again, I'd like to reiterate, fraud has not occurred, money is not missing, and money has not been stolen. Rather, we had to use too much of our savings account to pay our bills for the fiscal year '25, which has also impacted FY26. On August 19 of 2024, at a public Board meeting, so those of you in the audience, if you go to our website, you can actually go see the Board meeting and pull up the documents, the budget actually reflected, communicated, and documented a $3 million surplus. Further, the presentation included formal confirmation through the submission process at the state of Illinois that we did not need a deficit reduction plan as part of the budget submittal process. Furthermore, in February of '24, March of '24, April of '24, May of '24, and July of '24, at both the Finance and Regular Board meetings, the budget assumptions update reflected anywhere between roughly a $2.5 and a $3.2 million surplus. The only way that happens is one of two ways. First, something during the fiscal year happened of a significant nature that we did not anticipate. That did not happen. An example of that might be in Round Lake when we had Murphy Flood. You know, I believe if my memory is correct, that was a $2 to $3 million event. The other option is the numbers that were entered and submitted to the state of Illinois, as well as what was shared publicly, did not reflect the real costs and needs of the school district. The primary issue this created was that between November of '23 and August of '24, when the tentative budget was reviewed by the Board, and September, when it was approved, all of the budget planning and decision-making was based on inaccurate baseline information. These led to uninformed spending decisions during the budget development process. I've listed two examples, and I'm going to read both. Imagine hiring a contractor to build a house. The blueprint and budget are approved, showing that all costs are covered, even leaving money left over. But later, toward the end of the process, you find out the contractor didn't include the cost of the roof or the plumbing. On paper, it looked like there was a cushion, but in reality, the house can't be finished without spending more money. Picture a coach planning the team's season budget. They only count the cost of the uniforms and the buses, but forget to include referees and tournament entry fees. At the start of the season, it looks like the team has extra money to spare, but when the season actually begins, the extra disappears because real known costs were not factored in. In both of these scenarios, a savings account has to be used to cover the shortfall, and that's what happened here. Why wasn't it detected? The school district relies on the specific skills and expertise of the business manager, who again, also serves as the Board-approved treasurer, to alert the Board, administration, and community if there are budget problems or warning signs. We depend on the business manager to ensure that the budget numbers match what the district needs are. This means even showing a deficit and starting a reduction plan, because the key is to be transparent and truthful, even if that means the information is not positive specific to the budget. This would have allowed the district to respond over a longer period of time, this would have allowed us to communicate more deliberately with our community, and would not have been a surprise. One of the issues in this whole process is that staff salaries, which is our largest expense, was underbudgeted by a little over $3 million. What complicates that is that in our school district, which by the way, is not unique to us, we process six payrolls as opposed to the normal two in June, which is the end of the fiscal year to cover all of June, all of July, and all of August, because the largest employee group is not here in July and August. Each payroll is roughly $3 million, so the payroll salary account would actually show a surplus when reviewing year-to-date expenditures, even in the month of May, which is one year before the school year ends. We also process a significant amount of stipends in June, which contributed to the error. One of the issues, another issue is... Additionally, special education was underbudgeted by $4.5 million for the FY25 school year. The special ed budget is sometimes difficult to anticipate in terms of expenditures because of the unpredictability of student needs on a year-to-year basis, as well as the changing placements of specific students that include various service needs. Additionally, this was underbudgeted in FY21, but the school year ended with a strong surplus, and for that year, we were actually able to put $3.5 million back into our emergency fund. That occurred as a result of responsible budget and forecasting. Furthermore, and earlier in the presentation, we have a history of over a decade of very strong fiscal management. Overall, our budget had remained... With reference to the last decade, we have employed a treasures report with an accompanying format that had proven effective and is fairly constant with other school districts, given all of the strong indicators. However, it lacked historical trend data in the areas of year-to-date versus actual by-fund, which is something that we are already employing moving forward. Just as a reminder, it is not unique where a school district would end the year with expenditures that exceeded revenue. Generally, it's not the size of the one Round Lake had, but as a standard practice, if a district does end with a deficit, they use cash reserves to cover the shortfall. Furthermore, Illinois State Board of Ed does not impose any punitive measures toward the end of the year. the end of the year if you go over budget, especially if you have a history of strong financial standing. And again, the financial profile score is very, very important, and you saw that earlier in the presentation. Sometimes districts actually run planned deficits for one-time expenditures, like technology purchases, capital projects, et cetera. Often, school districts that do that are in Tier III and IV and have an extremely high fund balance. As a gentle reminder, Round Lake is a Tier I-funded school district. Our adequacy level is 73%. The state would like to get us to 90%, but we're still at 73. And based on our most recent Illinois School Report Card, in order to get us to 90%, we would need $35 million of additional dollars to hit the state adequacy target. Again, evidence-based funding typically covers staffing, materials, day-to-day operations to improve opportunities for students. So what are we going to do? What measures are in place moving forward? The scope of some of these strategies is significantly more substantive than others. I am going to go through every one, but call out specific strategies and spend a little bit more time on those. Multi-level review, the budgets do undergo review by the chief financial officers prior to Board of Education approval. Revenue expenditures and transfers reviewed separately by fund to confirm accuracy and to avoid the masking of errors. That was actually discussed in the Finance Committee meeting. The next one is very broad, very significant, and very substantive. Beginning this year, it's already happening, the budget report being submitted to the board for review and approval now provides current-year data and also presents historical multi-year prior data to provide early identification of anomalies and variances. This document will be made available on the district's website for transparency. We also, as a standard practice, even prior to this year, especially at the building level and department level, have regular meetings between budget managers and the chief financial officer. We are going to be recommending to the school board that in addition to the state-mandated audit, that we engage in an additional audit to go deeper for accountability and transparency In Round Lake District 116, we have 16,000 budget line items across all buildings and departments. We are implementing what's called an over-budget block. This is a feature in our financial system, which is Skyward, that will literally not allow a purchase order to be processed, even if a budget line item is a single dollar over. There are some exceptions to that, rare exceptions, that if we turn this on, it will actually limit opportunities for students in terms of programming and needs, but that will only be authorized by our chief financial officer. Blanket purchase orders, again, I'm not sure how much time I will spend on that, but we do issue blanket purchase orders. For example, if students need certain services, maybe at different facilities. Generally, in Round Lake, we allow 60 days to process a PO. While if we do that when students need support, they're going to get, the service is going to be delayed for 60 days, so we don't want to do that. We're going to, on some accounts, we're going to decrease the amount of time for those blanket purchase orders. We are going to provide additional training for all of our budget managers. Beginning immediately, I mean, it's in place as we speak, the Treasurers Report is going to be completely overhauled. If you go to the Finance Committee meeting this evening, the documents are available online. You'll be able to compare the old versus new Treasurers Report. The new Treasurers Report includes a dashboard for fund balances, status updates, and variance explanations. Again, this document will be made available on the district's website for transparency for anybody. Additionally, the Board of Ed Education will now receive a formal quarterly report discussing current-year budget analytics, projecting year-end results, and listing known challenges and corrective actions being taken. This will be a formal presentation to the Board of Education, like a meeting this evening. This presentation and quarterly review will also be made available on the district's website for transparency. In addition to that, those very same quarterly budget presentations will be made to the Education Association of Round Lake, ERL, their leadership team, so that they can hear what the current budget picture looks like, current and future year analytics, projecting year-end results, and listing known challenges and corrective action being taken. We will also schedule monthly meetings with various grant managers in the school district. I do need to point out that we have increased our skill and expertise. Our current chief financial officer has an accounting background, which lends itself to providing a more accurate, thorough, and transparent budget picture. And many, if not all, of the new safeguards outlined in this presentation will be added to Board of Education policy and administrative procedure to ensure future financial stability. This is the second time you've seen this slide, and so I want to close with covering the key takeaways again. The FY25 budget was significantly underestimated in staff salaries and special education costs, leading to incorrect assumptions, uninformed decisions, and negative impacts on both the current and next fiscal year. But it's very important to state, money has not been stolen, money is not missing, fraud has not been, fraud has not happened, and we can account for the budget shortfall. We had to use our savings account to operate at a level that we cannot continue doing. The former Treasurers Report, while standard, lacked the depth of the new formal process. Delaying detection of a budgeting error enhanced increased reporting frequency and quality will improve the budget process and catch potential issues sooner. And then lastly, we have several enhancements that will be implemented connected to being transparent, the quality, the volume, the depth, all of which will be available publicly on the website, and it will significantly increase in terms of the manner and frequency that it's presented publicly. And lastly, I just want to gently remind the community that not only do we have two board meetings a month, the second board meeting is preceded by a Finance Committee meeting where there's more ground-level discussion. Those meetings are open to the public as well. So at this point, that concludes the formal presentation. We will put it for comments and questions from the school board members. I'm going to actually come back around and sit at the...
Questions from the board?
Oh, wait for Dr. Mendoza to come back around. I know we talked, the board had talked previously to our evidence-based funding. We've seen a reduction in that as well this past year in regards to Chicago Public Schools.
Yeah, so it's very important that the community understands. So the evidence-based funding model, I believe, was implemented eight or nine years ago, and the total pot of that is roughly $300 million. 99% of the $300 million goes to Tier I school districts. We are a Tier I school district, meaning the state believes that we need more money to provide the very same educational opportunities as other school districts. This year, for the first time that I can remember, the city of Chicago, and by the way, that $300 million does not increase every year. So it doesn't go from 300 to 350. It stays at 300. It's new money, which is good, but this year, the city of Chicago, which they just happen to be the largest school district in Illinois, went from Tier II to Tier I. So basically, they moved into the same pie, part of the pie, as Round Lake. The $300 million did not go up, but if my memory is correct, they saw an increase of almost $50 million in, I'm sorry. The city of Chicago saw an increase of roughly $50 million in evidence-based funding, which they deserve because of the way the formula is. But what that did is it took funding away, the other Tier I school districts received less. So our evidence-based funding, I believe, went from $2.5 million to $1.2 million. And that, we found out about that, I think, two and a half weeks ago.
And to clarify, that would be the increase in funding that we received. Historically, we had received roughly $2.5 million of increases in our evidence-based funding, whereas this year, we're expecting only a $1.2 million increase in evidence-based
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. And I think it's important that the community is aware of that change in our funding as
Additional questions for Dr. Mendoza?
So, yeah, so respectfully, what will have to happen is if you want to, here's what we need to do, is we can give you a public comment form, and then when we get to public comment, you can actually, you'll have three minutes to make a public comment, and if you have questions, we'll actually get back to you after the meeting. Okay?
All right, next up, in order on the agenda, is our FY26 draft tentative budget for display, which does explain part of that.
Thank you. Yanira, if you would go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint. Thank you very much. So if we look at our FY25 budget, tentative budget for display, we have...
One second, I'm just going to make a comment. We will, we can't share, I'm going to comment on that. We are still working on the solution that hasn't been fully determined yet, and we are going to be very transparent about what that is, but we can't share that tonight because we don't have it. I, okay, so, I'm happy to, you know, after the meeting, I'm happy to meet with anybody, but the way that, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but the way the formal board meetings work, it's not designed to be a back-and-forth, so...
So if we take a look at our FY25 budget, what we have actually put up for the board's review is our few snapshots from the actual document that's in the board packet. Along with the snapshots, you can see that we have footnotes that are aligned with each of the line items in the budget. So what I'd like to do is first go through our tax levy. Our tax levy is projected to increase by 6% going into FY26, and that's what we have budgeted. It's important to realize that our FY26 budget is actually, for the levy, is actually made up of two different levy years. It is made up of levy year 2024 and levy year 2025. CPI for levy year 2024 is 3.4%, and CPI for levy year 2025 is 2.9%. Now, CPI is what's called Consumer Price Index, and that determines how much your levy will increase from year to year. Now, even though we have half of our levy from FY24 and half of the levy year 2025 budgeted into our FY26 budget, it's important to note that levy year 2025 will not be finalized until March of 2026. So that will still be outstanding. We have estimations in there based on current CPI trends and what is known to be our CPI for FY25. Corporate property taxes have been budgeted at $345,000. If you look at the footnotes that are within the board document, that has been budgeted based on estimations that were provided by the state of Illinois, and that link is also included. It's important to note that while it looks like we have a large surplus or a large change from FY25 to FY26, $291,000, that's actually that in FY25, we had a portion of our corporate property taxes that were sent to non-operating funds. So again, we have utilized the state of Illinois' estimated revenue assumptions for our corporate property taxes. This is not just simply an estimation that we have done internally. If we take a look at our tuition, registration, and those fees, we have estimated a 0% increase for FY26 based on the fact that the board just recently adopted registration fees for FY26 with a 0% increase for the fiscal year. Our earnings on investments, because of the fact that we had to utilize a portion of our cash reserves in FY25, we can expect that those cash reserves would go down for FY26. So if you imagine it as your personal budget and your personal savings account, if you used $1,000 out of your personal savings account, you're no longer going to earn interest income on that money. So we are anticipating that our earnings on investments will go down about 17% or $345,000. That's also reflective of the fact that we know that interest rates are declining as well, and so we factored that in. Our food service revenue that we have projected for the coming year, we do not anticipate a significant change there, so we have estimated a 0% increase. As a reminder, it's very important to note that whatever revenue we receive from our food service programming is only allowed to be spent on food service programming. It is not allowed to be spent on anything, any salaries, benefits, et cetera. If we look at our other local and flow-through revenue, our other local and flow-through revenue is estimated to go down slightly, only about $100,000. And that is because in FY25, we had received a reimbursement for our prior-year expenditure. And just like if you have a situation where you have an insurance claim for your roof and you get that money back, you will only receive that once. You will not receive that in multiple fiscal years. So we have actually reduced that revenue source to account for that. Our state EBF and categorical funding for next year, we have estimated to go up about 6%, but not as a whole. If you look at all of our levy revenue or our EBF revenue, the overall revenue is anticipated to increase significantly less. The major increase that is happening is a switch from operating, from non-operating funds into operating funds. But what is really important to note is that our categoricals are included in here, and our categorical payments are actually made up of two different things. One is our transportation claim, its reimbursement, as well as our reimbursement for special education expenses. The state of Illinois recently released the notification that those expenditures are expected, whereas prior, we had received about 80% of what was due to us. They're estimating that they're going to reduce our funding in FY26 so that we would only receive about 70%. We factored in the 70% reduction...
We have a direct, we have an agenda. The agenda was approved, and we are following the public agenda.
Now, the next two items...
We need to, we need to respect the speakers as they're speaking. We do have a public comment that is coming up, that will come up, and we will be taking public comment, but while we are, we are following the agenda that was approved for this evening's meeting. We understand that, but we have to...
So... We will, we, okay, I'll, so let me, so a couple things, the way, okay, so I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could, please, respectfully. We will absolutely, 100% share how this is going, how this is going to be resolved when we have the solution. We don't have that right now. Also, can I, so I just, I'm trying to be... I'm trying to be, I'm trying to explain how a public meeting is run. I understand, I understand. Okay? But, so we have, what we're going to do is we have public comments. When you have the public comments, we want you to add. We, so here, so, so I, I, okay, so here's what we want to avoid. We, I, we will share all this with you when we have the solution. I promise. We, we don't have the solution to share with you. We will, if, so we don't have that ready to share right now. We will share it. We will share it. So we can't, okay, so what we do, this, I, I'm, we're not, this, the meeting can't be run this way. We can't, it's not a hearing. So, so, no, but- We will, so, what I'm saying to you is if you have a public comment, ask your questions. We'll get it down. We will call you and meet with you and talk through that. The meeting is not designed to be a back and forth. It's not designed to be that. So, we will, we're, we will be transparent. We are going to share the solution with you. We will. I promise. We don't have it to share right now. We don't- I agree with you. We agree. I agree. I agree that our teachers are the most important resource we have. So if you would, if you would, please, please let us get through, please let us get through the presentation. The board, all the board members live in the community. So, if you would, please let us get through the presentation. So look, here's, we have to get through the meeting, and what I respectfully, I don't want to do, we have to get through the meeting. If you would, let us get through. Make your public comments. We will, we will take every question. I promise they will be answered. We cannot do it that way tonight because I don't have anything to share with you. So we will be honest. Not tonight. Yes, we can do that. I will consult with the board. I will consult with the board, and that would be, that would be an appropriate means to do a public hearing. So- We will get information out in a way that allows you to do that. Yes. Yes. We will, we will get information out that allows you to voice your concern, what your priorities are. If the board deems it necessary, we will do a public hearing. We will be transparent. And if we know what the solution is, we'll share that. We want to share that. We just don't have it yet. Okay? So, can we please, can we, let's, we're, we will send something out to get your written feedback. I will consult with the board about a public hearing. If we have solutions, we're going to share it. Our teachers and students have always been and will remain the priority, and we're going to do it responsibly. But I don't have all those answers this evening. I can't provide them to you. Okay, so if we could- Well, I, yes. Well, we're gonna, no, so, we're gonna get through the budget presentation. We can, you can make the public comments. We will, we'll write the questions down. I'll consult with the board about a public hearing, and we can go from there. Please, just respectfully, I'd like to proceed with the rest of the meeting. We're not trying to hide anything. I want to give you the answers, uh, and we're going to give you answers. We just can't do it all this evening.
Okay, so, um, and our grants, our grants have been budgeted. So if we take a look at our title grants and our special education grants, those have been budgeted, one with a slight increase, one with a slight decrease. It's important to note that with grants, whatever revenue is, is in the budget, we also have an associated expenditure that's exactly the same amount. So they have a zero impact in terms of whether or not we add to our savings account or decrease from our savings account. If we take a look at our operating funds expenditures, what you will note is that we have incorporated our collective bargaining agreements, increases for teacher pay and non-certified salaries into the FY '26 budget. All of the line items have been increased. We also, if you take a look at the, um, the associated benefits for retirement and social security, they have also increased to the same level to account for the associated benefits. Our estimated insurance benefits are expected to go up about 2.1%, which is actually a great increase compared to last year, which was 3%. So we're doing better in terms of our insurance benefits, which is actually $14 million of the overall budget. We have incorporated, um, our contractual increases for food service, as well as in the areas of purchase services. In terms of our utilities, you will note that we have a 4% increase that is budgeted for FY '26. Should for any reason our ComEd or any of our utility companies increase our rates beyond 4%, that would have an impact on our budget to actuals. So I wanted to make sure I made a note of that. One of the areas that we have significantly decreased in order to address our deficit budget situation has been in the area of capital outlay. You can see that we reduced that $1.3 million to help address the deficit. The next fund is our debt service fund. This is where we pay basically, if you think about it as your mortgage payment, this is where we make those bond payments or mortgage payments in essence. So you can see that we have an increase in our levy. Our levy is increasing by $2.2 million in FY '26. That is directly related to the fact that the district is not recipient of the, um, the property tax relief grant in FY '26, but you can see in FY '25, we had received it. If we take a look at our expenditures in debt service, these expenditures are not discretionary in any way, shape, or form, much like you have a set mortgage payment that you are required to pay. The district has set debt payments that it is paying. And so the debt payments that you see are directly related to our debt service payment schedule. In terms of our capital projects and life safety funds, you will see that we had received in FY '25, a large donation from one of our, um, community supporters, and that helped with our EEC building. Additionally, we had received some grant funds for that building. We will not be receiving either of those in FY '26, so those are not budgeted in FY ' '26. But if you take a look at our overall expenditures in the debt service or in our capital projects and life safety funds, we're estimating $5 million worth of expenditures. Now, that is for the summer projects that are being finalized right now. Should those projects come in under budget, we would actually come in under budget in these areas. And any funds that would not be used could be used for emergency building needs that we might have. So if we're looking at all funds in terms of our FY '26 budget, we're looking at a deficit amongst all funds of 11.5 or almost $11.6 million. It's important to note that the debt service fund and the capital projects funds deficits, these are purposeful and these are known. These are use of fund balance. The issue that Dr. Mendoza spoke to earlier about our deficit in FY '25 significantly impacted the operating fund deficit. So when we ended FY '25, we're projecting a deficit of $7.3 million in FY '25. We've already done budget work to bring that deficit down in FY '26 to $5.2 million. But being that many of the decisions that we make that can impact our budget are, have to be made in March, we can't do much more than what we have done in our current budget process to reduce that deficit. That's why the majority of the work that we will be doing to address the FY '25 deficit will actually be done in FY '27, and those reductions will be identified and communicated at a later date. Does the board have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Hearing none. All right. Next, next up-
Juan, can we just, we'd like to proceed with the meeting, please. Thank you. So, we will have a hearing. You'll have an opportunity if the board, certainly the board, the board, the board has heard you. We will take your questions down. We'd like to proceed to the next, next budget item. Please. The formal board meeting is to conduct board business, actually. That's the formal purpose of it. There's public comment, and a hearing is designed to be something different. Correct. Three minutes for anybody that wanted, wants to address the board under public comment. You can, you'll have three minutes to address the board. If you ask questions, we'll document those, and we will get back to you with a response. That's not, I'm not trying to upset anybody. That's not the, those are not Robert's Rules of Order. That's not how the meeting works. So let's- The board, the board here, the, the board hears you. We can't do that. Can I explain? If you're going to have a public, so what I, what I want to, what I'd like to avoid is, in order to have a public meeting, you have to post it 48 hours in advance. The board, the board will hear it. So, what we will do, what we will do is, the board president is responsible for setting the agenda. After the meeting, I will speak with the board president. And if there's, it, obviously, the consensus is to have a hearing. We will send out an invite with a hearing date and time so that you can come and have more time to address the board. Okay? Okay.
All right. The next up is the SEDOL governing board recap.
Okay. So, as you know, we are members of the Special Education District of Lake County for our more special, special needs students. Um, we had our quarterly meeting. There was special recognition. They updated on the summer programs. Everything went well. Um, they updated on their continuous improvement plan. They had a presentation on it. Everything's going in the right direction. Um, they updated us on their contract collective bargaining updates. Everything's going well with that. And they did a finance presentation to us. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Ms. Larson? Hearing none there. Next up is review contracts under 1,000. There was nothing to report there. Which will now lead us into public comment. Members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting electronic public comment form. Please note that speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments are accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting, and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, electronic public comment is provided to the board members in written form, and a link to the electronic public comment can be found online. There was no electronic public comment for this, this board meeting, but we do have local public comment. So I will be calling up, and each person, as I have a slip, will be getting their three minutes. The first one up I have here is Maria Delores Ruiz.
My name is Mariate Lourdes Ruiz Montoya. And I'm pissed as fuck. Some of you in the community might know me. I used to work here, actually, funny enough, last year. Um, I'm a school psychologist. As you all know, I presented myself previously in a different board meeting where we actually spoke about the ICE response protocol and procedures, um, as well as talking about implicit racial bias within, um, the schools. But today, we are obviously covering the financial budget and everything else going on. Um, if I'm shaking, it's partially because I'm angry, nervous, and just overall upset. Um, I'm really angry at what's going to happen for our students, um, for lack of responsibility on every single one of you, um, because in terms of your, of your presentation, you're supposed to be holding leadership accountable. And this is to all board meeting members as well, because while, yes, you live in Round Lake, let, look at who you're representing. Do you feel like you identify with any of them? Let's be honest. Let's be honest. No, you don't. You don't. And you don't understand it, and you recognize that you still hold a lot of power over the community that you're supposed to be serving. So be mindful of that. Be intentional. Be better. Holy fuck. Why do you want to keep creating a future that doesn't, has lack of representation, zero motivation? Don't feel like they matter. Don't feel like they belong, because realistically, you report that in your own Illinois report card. So why? Fuck. Anyway, none of my questions were in there, so I'll get into that. So I know that you guys mentioned that special education and placements were a reason for these budget crises. Um, so now I'm wondering, in terms of confidentiality for our students that are receiving special education minutes, that will be receiving these contract services, because that actually is a huge, huge issue within the schools. Our students deserve confidentiality. They, they deserve to be protected, and they deserve to be cared for, whether it be from a random person that just comes in once a month because you guys can't treat your employees fucking better. Oh my God. Holy shit. And in terms of questions, you said that in your email, you have deep gratitude for the staff, the teachers, and the community members, yet you left us no choice in the decision-making, clearly. Um, but gratitude without action is honestly meaningless. So at this point, if you are going to cut salaries, if you're going to cut the supports that teachers are receiving, what additional compensation, what additional support are you going to put in the classroom? And how are you going to continue to motivate them to even want to keep working here and not continuously get burnt out? And then on top of that, um, I have a lot. I have a lot. Um, fuck. Oh, and then based on the 2024 Illinois report card, there was a low feeling of support by staff and teachers, and that doesn't even include students at the Round Lake High School level, speaking to the principal that is sitting back there. Fuck. What actionable steps are you actually going to be taking from leadership, not just the leadership here, the administrators back there, the department head back there? Shout out to you, Eric, of course, bed lead. Fuck. In order to actually give them respect and autonomy in the classroom all the time, when they deserve it, when they're the ones with our students, the ones who actually are leading things. And then Dr. Don Mendoza, because this budget crisis fell under you, the low proficiency rates that we've seen for multiple years, and then also clearly the lack of oversight for special education, what part of your $250,000 salary percentage are you going to get reduced for this school year and the next school year to also support the budget cuts? Because you're hurting our students- Because you're hurting our students, and you're hurting the staff, and they're the ones that are there for our students. Thank you. So yes.
Your three minutes is up.
Yep, thank you. And that stands for the rest of the leaders or administrators in this, whatever department that wouldn't even send their own kids to these schools.
Thank you. Our next, our next public speaker is Stephen Ladwig.
You have to hold the mic. Set the, on the base. Yep, just hold it in. Yep.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Ladwig. I'm an alumni of the Round Lake Area High School, class of 2015, and it's been 10 years since I graduated from this school system. But sadly, I stand here today as a concerned community member and a fledgling organizer because the news about the 11 million budget shortfall that we see not only hundreds of teachers out of jobs in the district, but a complete loss of extracurricular activities for our students due to this budgeting error that none of the administration, financial advisors, nor the school board cared to recognize is quite frankly ridiculous. $11 million is not a drop in the bucket, and we need answers now. Now, something that is really interesting to me about all of this is the lack of transparency and accountability from this administration to give our community members a clear picture of what's at stake. So I would be happy to share that with everyone. We are told that the only solution to this budget is for hundreds of teachers to be forced out of their jobs, jobs that they worked hard to earn, that are necessary for our community, and that are constantly under attack by our government, and now it seems to be the same board of administrators here that are attacking our teachers and students. And we are told about cuts to extracurricular activities, that those are vital to the health and education and the future opportunities of our students and our community, especially today, when retention and truancy are at a high across the country in all of our public institutions. These are not solutions, but excuses and haphazard response to being caught unprepared to face the situation that is called for. Now, we have been told that teachers, students, and the community are forced to make up for the mistakes of an administration that claims that the issue fell on a single individual that got away from being held accountable, when in fact, this is the result of a system that does not prioritize teachers, the education of our students, nor the needs of our community. Especially during these times of great civil and economic strife that many of us are forced to face. But hey, it's only $1 million, right? But today, we need answers, and someone needs to be held accountable for this error. And we do not want to see our teachers punished for doing the work that we often hear is We do not want our students in the streets after school because of the mistakes of a few individuals and their negligence. We, as a community, expect better from our elected school board officials to defend our students and teachers and not toss them under the bus when a crisis arise. We are here to say, we stand with our teachers and the teachers' union. We stand with our students, and we want answers and real solutions today. Do it better, make it right, and we will not let this go unresolved. And any of you today who wish to organize, please find me or any of my friends here in this crowd. Let's get organized, and let's solve this together.
Thank you. Next up is Lady Gomez.
Hi, good evening. I just have a few things to say, not much. I live in Round Lake. I've been here most of my life. I've been through a lot with our school, as a student, through the strike, all of the things we have gone through. So I've been, I've been here long enough to see what goes on. I'm very upset because most of our parents came out here tonight thinking that they were gonna hear a few solutions that we have not heard. We just go through numbers really fast where we can't catch up to what we're saying. To the Board of Education, you are public servants, yet you are not servicing us at this time. I would like to know how this budget was approved? How is it that you did not see that the special education was missing in your budget? Perhaps it's time for a new Board of Education since due diligence is no longer being done by you guys. I sat here for the first meeting, they came, presented things, and you guys approved, approved, without really looking into things. Perhaps you do it at other times, but for this amount of money to be miscalculated, it blows my mind. When you do your own checking account at home, I bet you if you're missing $100, you go back and see what you did wrong. But for this situation, nobody saw it. The whole Board of Education didn't see it. Administrators did not see it. To me, that just does not make any sense. So I think it's time for a new board. I think it's time for us to rethink what we have.
Next up is Gemma Marshall.
Hello, good night, I mean, good night, good evening, because they're pretty much telling us to go, but mi nombre es Gemma Mariscal. Hola a toda la comunidad. We're here because we learned about this $11 million missing, or wherever it went. We don't know. But the thing that is angering me is that the fact that you say, well, it's $11 million. We have, you know, savings, and, and we've been using that. And you should've known that this meeting wasn't gonna be a normal board meeting. So as soon as you found out that this $11 million deficit, or wherever you wanna call it, happened, you should've called a hearing, because you wouldn't, you should've know that the community was gonna be questioning this. And then now, you don't even wanna answer the questions, and I know you have a process. I get that. But why not make an emergency meeting to answer questions, even if you don't have an exact plan of what you're gonna do? That's okay, but give some type of comfort, some type of answers to the public, to the community. Solutions and things that you plan to do, maybe even if it's not set in stone. But please, think of how the parents are feeling. I don't have kids in this, in the school district, but I grew up here. I'm a pride panther from 2003, and I still live here, and I work for my community. So I'm just, I hope you take that into the account. The people are not here to attack you or anything like that, but they just want answers. And a solution, and a plan, and how you're gonna work with the community, with the teachers that are gonna be affected, all the services, our students, our kids. Think about it in a big picture, not just short-term solutions. Thank you.
Next up, I've got Josie Zuniga.
Hi, so I was here for the Finance Committee meeting, and you guys graced upon Option One. You said, "We could vote for Option One." I want to know what that Option One is, because it was just alluded to a reduction in materials. So that's my question. And then my question number two, are there more options? Because that's option number one. And how does the community have a say in these options? So I think those should be presented in a transparent and clear way to the community if someone is voting on it, and I think the community voice should be integrated into that vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Vicky Granado.
Please hold, yeah, thank you. I'm Vicky Granado. I also work here for the district, and my question to you is, how many more construction slash renovations do you guys have on the table? Okay, that's part A. Part B, hopefully, Round Lake Middle School is part of it, or one of those constructions slash renovations, for the AC at the, for the gym slash cafe for the students. They have gym class, and they eat in the same area. Then, I'm shaking, because I'm really, really mad.
Okay.
But wherever you find the money, you need to find the money to put AC in there so that we don't get any more mold buildup. It was cleaned over the summer, but it's been 21 years since it's happened. So all that buildup, 21 years, you finally cleaned it up, but you didn't fix the problem. Please fix the problem. Thank you.
Anna Vasquez. I'll move it to the end.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Meckler, and I have a student at Round Lake High School, and also serve as the president of the Fine Arts Boosters for the district. This is an extremely upsetting situation and is unfortunate, and sad that our district finds itself in this predicament where such difficult decisions have to be made, which will impact so many. I know this is gonna be an unpopular opinion by the crowd, but I appreciate the board and district being transparent and taking accountability for their mistakes. We obviously can't change what has happened, but can only find solutions to move forward from here. I wanted to speak tonight, and I know there's some things going on with the teachers and options and stuff like that. Those haven't been voted on yet. More than likely, why you guys can't present it tonight, because you have to wait to hear from the teachers. I wanted to speak tonight for a few reasons. First, to say that we have amazing teachers and staff in this district. I get to work with so many of them, and so many of them go above and beyond for their students. To any of them here tonight or listening online, I want to thank you for your hard work and your dedication. Secondly, I wanted to voice my concerns over how this situation will impact the students, not only from a learning standpoint, but also from an extracurricular standpoint. Programs, clubs, and sports are so important to a student's everyday life, and many students, like mine, rely on these programs. There are so many students who struggle to come to school for various reasons, but being in a program, a club, or sport is what drives them to school each day and helps them in so many ways. I know personally from my family that fine arts programs have played a major role in their lives. These programs serve not only as an outlet for them to express themselves, but also teaches them respect, responsibility, leadership skills, as well as many life skills. My youngest has grown so much as a young adult and come so far by participating in programs like marching band, Winter Guard, Honors Art Club, choir, and theater. They have also found a passion for medicine by participating in the Future Medical Panthers Club. Over the last 21 years, my three children have been in many programs and clubs throughout this district, and I can confidently say that each program had and continues to have an impact on their lives and taught them something along the way. The programs and clubs have played an important role in their education. So often in these situations, programs and clubs are cut, and I hope this will not happen in this instance. When discussing how the future looks for this district, I hope the needs of the children will be put first. Thank you for your time.
All right, next up, I've got Emmy Victor. All right, not hearing one to step up for that.
Please hold. Can you just hold the mic down?
You gotta hold the button at the base of the.
On the base. Yep.
This is gonna be, this is gonna be a very simple conversations between me and one eight adults. You hired somebody, they made a mistake, correct? You hired somebody, they made the mistake, correct? You should all lose your jobs. If I made an $11 million mistake in hiring, no matter what, to do my accounting, I would not be having any employment anywhere. You are playing with our children's lives because of your negligence. You are responsible for looking over the budget, making sure it's correct. There's how many of you here? And you're telling us, parents, the solution is what? What is the answer? We all have children here at school. Teachers are telling our kids that there's no after-school programs. You, what do you tell a 10-year-old who wants to go to court? That the adults who are making the decisions for her are not responsible? You're not responsible? Then who is? Which one of us is responsible for this mistake here? You tell me. Name one of us. It's you! You're the one that got, you are, look at her crying. You're responsible! Take the responsibility on your fucking shoulders, get the fuck off the board, and have somebody take over what they know what they're doing! That's it!
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jesus Grifaldo. I'm a member of the community. I'm also a cap master for PAC 99, and also the cap master for Troop 275. I have lived in Round Lake for 33 years, so I have seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. So we all make mistakes. The only thing that I'm, I'm really care about is the kids and the teachers. And now the teachers, because I have seen students that they come back and they're being hired as teachers. So my main concern is, how are we gonna fix it? How are we gonna help the new teachers and the almost-retired teachers not to lose their jobs, and also the after-school programs? I really care about the kids and my community. So my main concern is, what are we gonna do to fix this problem and to not lose any jobs or any programs? Thank you.
All right, next up, I have Mercedes Alfarro.
My name is Mercedes Alfarro. You know me. And you know how I love this community and how I love my students, because all the students are very special for me. So I am concerned, like my community. I am concerned with the current situation, and I am here today because my community deserves more respect and our kids better education. The District 116 needs to commit to take care of our money, because we should not pay the consequences of your actions. I have three points that are very important that I will be handing to you. First one, tonight, do not take out service from our students. Second, do not hire administrators that have high salaries and are not efficient. And third, we need the district to track down our money, and we want proof that it is older. So mi nombre es Mercedes Alfarro. Estoy muy consternada por esta situación, y estoy aquí porque mi comunidad merece respeto y nuestros niños una buena educación. Necesitamos que el Distrito 116 se comprometa a cuidar de nuestro dinero, porque no estamos dispuestos a pagar sus consecuencias. Tengo tres puntos importantes que les entrego hoy en sus manos. Número uno, no quitar servicios a los estudiantes, por favor. Número dos, no contratar administradores que ganan muy buen salario y que no son eficientes. Y número tres, necesitamos que el Distrito recupere nuestro dinero, y queremos pruebas claras de ese dinero.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Inez Jimenez.
So I'm a mom of an eight-year-old boy that goes to this school. Every time that I see him coming to the school, he's so happy to see his teachers, and he's so excited to be someone one day. Me? Me, I'm, I'm studying to be an early childhood educator as well, but looking into this, looking into what the future could actually be, because you guys are responsible of it, I wouldn't dare to be in this district. I'm sorry to say it, but you guys were responsible. You guys had a commitment to our community to take care of it, and you are not showing it. With all the respect, believe me, I'm trying to be as calm as possible. I went to the school and when I asked to have my kid to be reevaluated, to have speech therapy, what they told me is, "We have a shortage. We will not be doing testings for speech." How is it possible that you guys are the ones responsible to take care of a budget? What if it was your kid? How would you feel as a parent to go to a school like that? To send your kid to a school where he will not be having any extra activities just because someone decided not to review a budget? You guys, I'm pretty sure all of you take care of your houses, right? This is a house too. This is a house where the teachers take care of the childrens. Our childrens, they mean the world to us. So, that budget had to be taken care the best way possible, because you guys are in charge of our kids' future. Nobody else. Unfortunately, if it was for us, we would be reviewing it every day. You guys talked about numbers. Okay, I'm sorry, I did not study what you guys are studying. I'm not in charge of that and I couldn't understand most of what you talked about. I'm not here because I wanna see numbers. I am here because I want answers. I wanna know what is gonna happen. Not only that, you tell me that you are looking into answers, you're looking to find solutions, but what's gonna happen in the meantime? What are you guys doing on that time of period where you're going to try and find solutions? What's gonna happen to our kids? Are you guys gonna be putting more e-learning days? If that's the case, what's gonna happen to us that we have to work? Take days off so our paychecks get also lower? We can't. We take into consideration our kids being at school, not because we don't want them to be at home. I would love to have my kid 24 hours a day. I wouldn't mind, but I want him to have a future, and his future, it's on all of you guys' hands. No, no, I'm sorry to say it, but us, we are worried about them. We're worried about our teachers too. Our teachers are also important. Their salary, let me ask you something. If you reduce our teacher salaries, are you guys gonna reduce yours?
Thank you. The 30 minutes is up.
Thank you.
Alright, next slip is Anna Vasquez.
Yes, I am super concerned and my question was, what's gonna happen with speech therapy? Three of my ki-, I have five kids. My oldest received speech therapy. Thank God of the teacher. He did great. He was nominated to be the Illinois Award. He's a seventh grader right now. Okay, but I'm worried about my other three kids. What's gonna happen with three? What's gonna happen? Are you guys gonna do something about it? Are you guys gonna cut up the service as well? As what she was saying? They were saying about, are you guys gonna, like, if they were eligible to receive the speech therapy? I'm worried about my kids. Are they gonna get it? You guys cutting up everything, what's gonna, like, I'm worried about my kids. Yeah, you guys are just like, yeah, since they're not your kids.
Thank you. And our last slip for the evening is Juan Ruiz.
Good evening. This is extremely hard for me. I know a lot of you guys. Some of you guys have been my parents that I've worked directly with, coworkers and people that I've worked directly with. I worked for this district 14 years and I didn't work for this district for administration. I worked for the families. Very passionate about this district and these families. Transportation has been failing us over and over and over again. Transportation needs to be fixed. Point. We have never seen so many struggles with transportation. I brought both of my daughters back to this district this year, hoping that it was gonna be different, and transportation did not fail me to fail me. I got a call at 2 o'clock, I think. We don't know where your girl's at. She was not checked on the app. I'm like, what the heck? They put her in the wrong bus and she's probably at the wrong stop. Now she's lost. I flew down to the school. I got there, thanks to Trina, thanks to Mr. Smith. They've been super amazing with their communication and they have eased off the anger that was failed on me, on the amount of failure. My other fear, bringing my, both of my girls to this district, was administration. And I am so sorry, but each one of you guys have failed me as a community member, as a parent, as a friend. I have siblings that work for this district. I've been trying to come back to this district. I had to leave this district because I wouldn't get an opportunity. I had to go to another district, seek another opportunity to work. I've been trying to come back here and I'm probably burning my bridges to come back to this district, but you know what? I gotta stand up here because I'm a dad. Then I'm a brother. Then I got a lot of my friends, teachers, custodians, secretaries that have been affected by this, not only teachers, teacher assistants. What's gonna happen on the classrooms? We need to know. We don't want classrooms with less teachers and less TAs. It's already a struggle as it is, and you guys know it. Don, I know you know it. I know Eric knows it. I know Jeff knows it. I know Mary knows it. I know everyone knows it. What are you guys gonna do to alleviate the inconvenience that you're gonna do on teachers and TAs and custodians and possibly bus drivers to affect or inconvenience you? Are you taking a freeze on your pay? Are you taking a pay cut? What about those additional packages that you get for insurance? We pay for your family insurance. We as a community pay for the administrator, the administrator's insurance. You guys need to be communicated. I've been here since 1999. I was a McGee student and I went through high school. I was an employee here. I'm very disappointed you guys have failed us. I, it is so frustrating. Do something to fix it. I'm not gonna stop. I already opened my mouth. Very sad that I got questioned for putting a post on Facebook inviting the community to be here, because you guys lack on communication. Don, you guys fail communicating to the families. Look at your community.
Thank you very much.
We're a hard-working community. We're Hispanics.
Thank you very much. Alright. Alright, we are going to take about a five-minute, five to 10-minute recess here, so we will come back and re-adjourn at 8:50 PM.
Thank you for that recess. We are back in open session at 8:54 PM. And next up in the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Mendoza.
So there's no formal report tonight. The report was with the budget summary earlier in the presentation.
Thank you. Next up is committee reports, and we had a finance committee meeting this earlier before this meeting, and Ms. Negrete McGinley.
Thank you, Board President Francisco. Yes, the finance committee met earlier this evening. As I have in past practices at meetings, I'll report out on those items that are not on the board agenda later this evening. So Solution Tree Embedded Coaching for secondary, uh, secondary schools presented by Ms. Damp. This is a contract that will come forward at the next board meeting for professional development for our middle school and high school staff. It's not to say that, uh, there is nothing provided for our elementary schools. Our elementary schools are focusing on new curriculum. Also is free hugs. This is a assembly held at the high school for high school students only. Uh, the contract, uh, is in the finance packet if people want to look at that. Um, and again, we just asked to make sure that we have a certificate of insurance for the person, uh, holding the assembly. And background check is done as well for the individual. The homecoming dance, homecoming is coming up. Uh, there is a contract for the DJ. Again, making sure they have a certificate of insurance and that a background check is done on the individual for, or the DJ. Uh, next is, uh, post-prom. Yes, they are already thinking and planning for prom for the 2025, 2026 school year. They will be going to, uh, Lake Geneva this year. Uh, usually the kids go to the, um, swimming after the event that is not open or available for the students this year. So they'll be going to an event or it game arcade, uh, that's about 10 minutes away that our m- middle school students use both Round Lake Middle and McGee for their eighth grade of graduate or eighth grade promotion. So that's contracted there. Again, everything else that's on the finance agenda, I will go over as those come up in the meeting.
Any additional questions from the board on the finance committee update? Hearing none, we will move to approval of open minutes.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 31st, 2025 special board meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, second by Ms. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the August 4th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, who had the second. Ms. Lee, well, in the second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the August 18th, 2025 special board meeting minutes.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Larson, second by Ms. Klingler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jewitt?
Abstain.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes. Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the following items. The accounts payable report for $1,434,865.55. The previous motions report for $607,132.12. The June 2025 treasures report, the July 2025 P card report, and the August 2025, August 25th, 2025 employment report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Klingler, second by Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to old business, which is Dr. King and the 25, 26 semester one overnight trips and/or over 200 miles.
Good evening. Uh, just asking for your approval on the, uh, two overnight field trips and the two field trips that are over 200 miles. The seventh grade springfield trip for both of the middle schools, and then the boys and girls wrestling, um, events.
Any questions from the board for Dr. King and the team?
I just always ask about background checks.
Yes, we did the background check and we checked, uh, made sure we have all of our ducks in a row with the insurance and everything.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to reiterate that question I had previously when this was presented to the board again, uh, opportunities for fundraising for families so that their student can attend these events. I know if I remember correctly, the middle school principals said there is not one that we do. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's no, um, there is not a current fundraiser for those, but that, that's based on the, the previous few years where they've, uh, had all students be able to participate who would like to participate and, uh, not having to turn any students away.
Okay, so we haven't had to turn any students away because of a student not being able to afford.
That's correct.
Okay, so of course you'll keep us updated should that happen.
100%. I know that the teams who actually put the field trip together are very, um, aware to make sure that it's not a hardship for anyone and that any student who wants that opportunity has the chance to get it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing no additional conversation.
All right, I need a motion to approve the proposed 25, 26 first semester overnight trips and/or field trips over 200 miles round trip as listed.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Ms. Larson and a second from Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Abstain.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries. And next up is Dr. Lamping.
Thank you. This summer, we had to replace a rooftop unit that provided heat and cooling to approximately nine areas in Ellis Elementary School. The original bid came in at, uh, $328,000 for the multi-zone unit. Uh, we are pleased to announce that it came in $20,000 under projection and that money, uh, will be returned to the district. So this is approval of a deductive change order.
So, yeah, just to add, again, as I mentioned, I will go over those items that are at finance. So this was one of those items and I believe, thank you for correcting me, Dr. Lamping. I think I said 25,000. It's 20,000. So thank you for that correction. So as you heard Dr. Lamping say, we had to replace the rooftop handler at Ellis. We know that has inconveniences families because, because it has, we had to close school because of that going out. So this is the cost of that, but we are happy that it came in under budget.
Any additional conversation or questions from the board? Hearing none.
I need a motion to approve the allowance deduction change order in the amount of $20,000 for the Raymond Ellis multi-zone project.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Klingler, second by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes. Motion carries. And that will bring us to new business and Dr. Lamping.
Thank you. The Round Lake Area Park District approached the, um, school district because they are planning on redesigning the Shag Bark tennis courts. Those are the courts that are immediately adjacent to Indian Hill Elementary School. They are planning, right now there is six courts. They are planning to do two tennis courts and two pickleball courts. So they will not be utilizing the entire space that is currently allocated. They've approached us to give us that land that's immediately north of their tennis courts because they know that in the, we have parking issues and the village also likes to utilize our parking lots for their large scale events. During those discussions, we also noted that the current playground uh, that is immediately west of Indian Hill Elementary School is actually purchased, the equipment purchased by and is manned, maintained by the park district is actually on school district property. Conversely, the south parking lot that the district utilizes for staff to park, buses to come through with student dismissal and events is actually property owned by the park district. What we would like to do and are asking for your support is to swap the land so that our PIN number, property number is actually, um, correct for us and their property is correct for them. Uh, right now, the park district has approved this. It is waiting for your approval. After that, they'll have a closing, um, where the attorney will go and do the closing within 90 days if you approve tonight.
So as mentioned, this was on finance. So a few things. Thank you to the park district for giving us that land since they're not using all six tennis courts, only going to use half. Uh, you heard Dr. Lamping mention about park district playground. It is noted that uh, Indian Hill is not the only property we have where we share with the park district. Ellis is another one. So it's asked that Dr. Lamping get all the PIN numbers for our properties so we know where those start and stop for all our properties and one that we have it on hand for future. And then with their construction and deconstruction of those six tennis courts, uh, they plan on doing that in May of 2026, correct?
That is correct. They will start after school is out for us. Um, conversely, to be a good partner, we're going to ask Dr. Stefan if we cannot hold any summer school or summer programming at Indian Hill this coming summer so that it doesn't, you know, we don't put our students at risk and/or their project at risk.
Right, that, that, I know that we can sometimes have summer school, uh, at that building. So again, we would want to not have anything there so it's not to inconvenience or put any students in jeopardy.
Correct, and I've created the documents with the PIN numbers and shared them with, uh, the chief financial officer and the deputy superintendent and the assistant superintendent of schools and HR.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? And again, just as a clarification, Dr. Lamping, this is a zero dollar transaction. This is purely a paperwork transaction, correct?
Correct.
And were they had to have children that were needing that summer school services, would they just shift them to a different school?
The last time we had summer school, we had it at Ellis. We might have had it at and then at, when we were doing the grade level transitions, I think we had it at one of the middle schools. So we would just host it at another one of the elementary schools.
Thank you.
Hearing no additional conversation.
I need a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Round Lake Park District, which stipulates the exchange of District 116 property and pro- park district property for the mutual benefit of the respective organizations.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, who had the second? Mr. Jewitt, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And that will bring us to our FY '26 draft tentative budget. Ms. Imsole.
Janira, can we have the PowerPoint?
While we are pulling up the PowerPoint, I would like to just remind the Board of Education that you have a brand-new budget document in your packet. This budget document is significantly more robust than budget documents that have been presented in the past. It includes footnotes and we will be going through those tonight and we have our PowerPoint up. So first, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight on our FY26 budget. The first thing that we are going to do is take a look at our operating funds. If we look at this first line item, which is our tax levy, you can see we have historical information provided, our FY24, which is two years ago. We have our FY25 preliminary information and we have our FY26 budget that is being presented. If we look at the levy as a whole from FY24 to FY25, it increased about 1.2 million dollars. So when we're looking at the increase that we are projecting for FY26, 1.7 million dollars, it is not out of line with historical trend patterns. If we take a look at the next line item, which is our corporate property taxes, it's important to note that our corporate property taxes are being budgeted at three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in this coming fiscal year and that is a direct result of information that was provided by the state of Illinois in terms of estimated corporate property taxes for the coming year. The link to the information has been provided in the footnotes of the budget document should you decide to take a look at where that information was provided. The next slide item that we have are our tuition registration and fees, which you can see from FY24 to FY25 increased slightly by eight percent. However, the board has adopted a zero-budget increase for our registration fees for the coming year. So we have zero percent budget increase in our FY26 budget. The next line item are the earnings on investments for the district. If you think about it like your personal savings account, you receive interest on the money that is in that savings account. Given the deficit in FY25, we reduced our savings account and therefore we have reflected a reduction, just like you wouldn't earn interest on money once you've spent it out of your own personal savings account. We cannot earn interest on money that has been spent. So we are budgeting for a slight decrease in our earnings on investment. This is to reflect that change in cash balance for the district as well as anticipated rate reductions that are coming down the pike from the economic situation just in the United States as a whole. The next line item would be our food service revenue line item. We are budgeting a zero percent increase. It is important to note that any variance that we receive, that money would either come from or go back into our food service fund balance, which is not something that can be spent on anything other than our food service program and improving our meals for our students. The next line item, other local revenue, the major reason for the hundred thousand dollar decrease in other local revenue is directly related to an expenditure reimbursement that the district received in FY25 but will not receive in FY26. So if you think about it, if you had a car that you totaled and you received a check for that car, you're not going to get that check for that every year, neither with the district for a reimbursement of a prior-year expenditure. So we can't budget for that in future years. The next line item, which is our largest revenue line item, would be our state funding, which comes in the way of evidence-based funding as well as categoricals and our grants from the state. Our state evidence-based funding historically has been, has increased by anywhere from 2.5 million dollars to 11 million dollars from year to year to year. This year, we had originally anticipated that we would receive a 2.5 million dollar increase in this line item. However, the state literally in the last few weeks released information that our increase in our largest source of revenue will only be increasing by 1.2 million dollars. This is mainly due to the fact that the district is what's called a tier-one funding district. And the state of Illinois allotts a certain pot of money for all school districts that are in that tier-one category. Chicago Public Schools, which is what the largest school district in the state of Illinois, moved into that tier funding this year and for, for lack of a better term, gobbled up a very large portion of this, which reduced the amount that all the other school districts in tier-one funding received. So we, as a result, are receiving less funding than we had originally anticipated and that has been factored into our budget. Additionally, the state has released information whereas we do not have 100% guarantee on what they are prorating, what's called our categoricals. Our categoricals are also included in this, but they prorate it. So in other words, they say, we owe you X dollars, but we don't have enough money in our budget, so we're only going to give you 80% of what we owe you. Well, in the past, we had received 80% of our transportation reimbursement and 80% of our special education reimbursement. They are anticipating that this year they will only reimburse us 70%. So those two reductions have also been factored into this line item. Should they come back and say that they are prorating it at 80%, that would have a positive impact on our budget. But odds are they will likely come back with what they have already released, which is that they will be prorating at 70%. Should we receive information, we will definitely make note of that in a finance committee and board report and it would be included in our footnotes and future treasurer's reports. If we take a look at these next two line items, which are title grants and federal special education, these are both grant line items. What that means is any revenues that are estimated in here are also accompanied by equal expenditures. If you think about it this way, if you get a grant to say buy food, you actually have to buy the food and you don't get more money reimbursed unless you spend more money. So what we have here are our major grants and they have been budgeted at 3.6 million and 1.8 million, but they have corresponding expenditures of 3.6 and 1.8 million dollars in the budget. Should the state or the federal government allot us more money, say they say we're going to give you another 500,000 dollars of title funding, we would have to spend that, so that would come with a change in our expenditures. So that is a long explanation to say that grants have zero impact on how much money the district receives in terms of its surplus or its deficit because the revenues will equal the expenditures from year to year to year. Finally, the last line item in our operating budget would be our other federal funds. This, the majority of this line item is our Medicaid funding, which we are anticipating to stay pretty well flat for the year. However, we have implemented, implemented new software in our special education department that will hopefully help us capture more dollars in federal funding with Medicaid and that would be free money to the district that we could then reinvest into our educational programming. If we take a look at the corresponding expenditures to the revenue that we just presented, we have our salaries and benefits. Salaries for 12-month employees have been estimated in this chart based on actual payrolls. Since the beginning of the fiscal year started in July, we've actually run a few payrolls and we were able to estimate these expenditures based on actual payrolls. However, we have some major categories, anywhere where you see a 6% increase. Those 6% increases are for salaries that do not begin until September, the September 15th payroll. So these have been estimated based on prior-year actuals and what we did was we applied what our collective bargaining agreement provided as pay increases to all of its members into our budget. However, we should have a September 15th payroll that will be run prior to the adoption of our final budget and we will be doing an analysis to be sure that what we have budgeted correlates with what we are actually spending. If there is a major change between what is budgeted right now and our actual first payroll, we will bring that when we bring the final budget for adoption in September. Our insurance benefits this year are estimated to increase 2%. That's actually a better percentage increase than in prior years where we saw a 3% increase. This is a direct result of the district being part of a large insurance cooperative that helps us maintain lower increases in insurance rates. If we take a look at our food service line item here, we are estimating an increase of 2%. This is directly in correlation with our contract with organic life and what we estimate for the coming year. Purchased services, we are estimating to increase about 5%. And if you think about the cost of living increase for this year, the cost of living increase was 3.4%. So this is in line with that, but we have also incorporated different items that were approved by the board in budget assumption documents that were presented between November and up through August of, or sorry, July of this year. Those have been incorporated into our purchase services as well. Next, our utilities. You can see that from FY24 to FY25, our utilities increased 14%. This year, we are estimating that they will increase 4%. However, should we have a situation where our insurance rates come in higher, the treasurer's report will help us identify that and we will make that information known to the board and share that information should that come. That would also appear in the footnote section of our treasurer's report. The next line item would be our supplies and materials. As a direct result of the deficit for FY25, we implemented an overall budget reduction of 10% to all supplies in the FY25 budget. However, at the same time, we had textbook adoptions, for example, that were already being implemented and approved. So while we did decrease our supplies by 10%, we did have some things that increased in this, which is why we don't see a full 10% reduction in supplies. We only see a 3% reduction. The next line item would be the major line item that we reduced as a result of the deficit for FY25 and that would be our discretionary spending on things like equipment and capital improvements on the district. Next, we have our special education line. This was the line that in FY25 came in significantly under budgeted. So we can see the trend data here where we have an increase from FY24 and this is actual activity. This is not the budget. So we can see what we actually spent in FY24. We spent 6.4 million. In FY25, we spent 7.4 million, resulting in a 15% increase. This year, we are estimating an 11% increase. 10% of that is directly related to our contract with CEDOL, which is our special education cooperative that we work with closely and most of our students attend. But we also have a residential placement that was made in FY, made during the year of FY25 that was only part year, so that student will be attending a full year and it required an additional increase to our budget to allot for that. Lastly, we have our other objects. Our other objects, we are anticipating to basically stay the same from last year to this fiscal year. Our non-operating funds, which are our debt funds, one of which would be our debt funds, these are our bond payments. And if you think about it in personal terms, that's kind of like a mortgage payment that you might have. We have multiple bonds that the district is responsible to pay every year and we have a levy that accounts for that. Now what you will see is a significant increase in the levy this year to account for our bond payments. That increase in the levy is a direct result of this grant sunsetting or no longer being allotted to the district in FY26. So whereas we had 4.2 million dollars that came from the state that helped pay for those bond or mortgage payments, that grant is not in FY26 and so our levy has increased to account for that and to allow us to continue to make those bond or mortgage payments, for lack of a better term. Our corresponding expenditures, we have budgeted to increase about 14%. Again, these, this line item is a set line item. It is not a discretionary item. When bonds are made, there is a bond payment schedule that is developed for the district and we have budgeted the bonds that need to be paid in FY26 based on that payment schedule. If we take a look at our capital projects and life safety funds, you can see that we are projecting a decrease in our levy. We do not levy for capital projects. That is not something that is actually a leaviable item, but we do levy for our life safety projects. This year, this coming year in levy year 2025, we will be levying less money in our life safety projects so that we can actually send that money to the education fund and help with the deficit in the education fund. So we, that is the reason we have budgeted a lesser levy for our life safety funds. If we take a look at our other local revenue, that significantly decreased from FY25 to 26 and that is because we had a very large donation from a generous corporation within the district that allowed for us to do some building improvements and that will not be something that reoccurs in FY26. We also had a corresponding state grant that allowed us to improve our facilities. That grant was significant and coupled with the donation to help us make those improvements on our EEC building. And that again is not something that we will be doing again in FY26. If we take a look at our FY26 capital and life safety projected expenditures, we have 5 million dollars basically projected for expenditures in the capital projects fund and this directly relates to the board's adoption back in March of several projects that were to be completed this, this current summer. And that would be, we had EEC asphalt and concrete work that was being done. We had the village fire alarm. We had our Murphy elevator project, our Ellis library lift, the RLHS baseball softball fields, the village Phase 1 asphalt and concrete work. We had McGee ESC asphalt work and we had our Ellis RTU unit that needed to be replaced. All of these projects were in the process of being completed when we were, when the budget deficit was identified and so these will be finalized for this year since the money had already been transferred since the projects had already begun. However, this is, this 5 million dollars is not indicative that in FY27, for example, we will be spending another 5 million dollars. In fact, we have put a halt on capital, large-scale capital projects until we are able to address the deficit that is in our operating funds. So if we're looking at all of our funds as a whole, it's important to note these funds right here. This, this is what it takes to actually operate the district. This is where your teachers are paid, your utilities are paid, those types of things. We are looking at a budget deficit of 5.3 million dollars in FY25. This is significantly improved, or I'm sorry, FY26. This is significantly improved from FY25 where we ended the year with a 7.3 million dollar deficit. This is a direct result of reductions that we have put in place such as the capital projects reduction and our supplies 10% reduction that we implemented. But we have, and we had new revenue that did come into the district for FY26. So those things working together helped us identify that we have a 5.3 million dollar budget deficit that we will be addressing this year and looking actually to address in FY27 when we can really and truly to address in FY twenty-seven when we can really and truly make the reductions that we need to do to address this situation. Our debt service fund has a deficit. This is normal for debt service funds. You often take in your money in a different period than when you spend it. So this is actually a planned deficit and completely in line with what we would anticipate. And as we already discussed, we have our capital projects that we are anticipating to have a four point eight million dollar deficit. This is a purposeful spend down of fund balances that are in the capital projects fund. You can see those fund balances in this line right here. So we will be again finalizing those projects that I alluded to just a few minutes ago. And once those are done, we will not be continuing any major capital projects until such time as we have a revenue source that can support those. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I do. So for the state EBF categoricals grants line, if the increase is one point two for EBF, where's the three five?
Why is it so much larger? So what we're doing in, when we're looking at this is we're just looking at our operating funds. If you actually take your board packet, I don't have a slide that shows this. Actually, I do have a slide that shows this. So if we take a look.
No, it's on the operating funds.
Nope. It's right here, though. What, so we had evidence-based funding that was used to support, nope, it's, it's in debt. Let me go to debt service. So right here, we had evidence-based funding that came in, in the way of what's called the property tax relief grant. And that evidence-based funding came in through state sources, but went to a non-operating fund. In the coming year, in FY twenty-six, that four point two million will not be spent out of the debt service fund. It will be spent out of the operating funds. So we're not receiving an overall increase. It's just moving from a non-operating fund into an operating fund, which is why we are seeing a, an increase here of four point seven million, even though, even though we only really received one point two million dollar increase in evidence-based funding. So it's just a move from one to the other.
They turn the, the property tax relief grant into our, basically our evidence-based funding. It did, it becomes part of the, part of the base funding minimum, basically.
Any additional questions from the board?
Just thank you, Ms. Amesoul, for the detailed report on the tentative budget. Just wanted to reiterate, under that other local and flow-through, that one point eight, that was from the Schreiber, Schreiber Foundation.
That's correct.
In conjunction with the grants we received to make the addition at the Early Education Center. So again, we will not see those monies again. It was used purposefully in that addition.
Administration is requesting that the Board of Education adopt the resolutions and allow the district to place on display this tentative budget. Upon adoption from the board, we will be posting the information in the newspaper in compliance with the law and having the budget available at the old National Bank Finance Department for individuals to come view at any time.
All right. With that, I need a motion to review and support the fiscal year 2026 tentative budget as presented. Establish the public hearing for Monday, September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM as required by the Illinois School Code. Adopt necessary resolutions and authorize administration to execute the necessary associated documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to Dr. Lamping and the independent contract.
Yes, thank you. We are asking the Board of Education to approve a small contract with top-line transportation for four temporary school bus drivers. The background on this is at the end of last school year, we had thirteen vacancies in our transportation department, largely due to competing salaries and other companies around the area. Over the summer, we lost three drivers, two to health reasons and one to a promotion within the district, which brought us up to sixteen drivers. We have done a great job at hiring drivers. In fact, you approved four tonight. But we want to make sure until we get a full complement of drivers that we are able to handle any call-ins with sick time or personal leave days that somebody submits. So we are asking for these four. We anticipate we will not utilize all four for very long, but it is a safeguard to make sure that we have a full complement of drivers. Those drivers will be trained on the new My Ride K-12, as well as the tablets that they use. They also go through as drivers with CDLs go through an extensive state background check and approval process. We do not recommend any bus driver to our HR department that has not passed that. So in addition, thank you to the Board of Education who approved the training stipend in the spring of last year because that individual has been instrumental to help train our drivers that are coming in on the tablet, the My Ride K-12, as well as air brake and other items that are needed to get full certification.
So this was at finance earlier, and Dr. Lamping already alluded to those questions, which, again, making sure background checks are done on those individuals. And then of course, training as we've implemented a new busing software so we know the students have to scan their ID because it has a chip in it. So again, making sure those two things are done as we bring in contractors to service our students.
Hearing no additional conversation.
Need a motion to approve the independent contract agreement with top-line transportation to provide four temporary school bus drivers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
And that will bring us back to Ms. Amesoul.
The next item in your board packet is the FY twenty-five resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan to the education fund. School code allows the board to authorize inter-fund loans between funds when one fund temporarily lacks the cash flow and another fund has a surplus. So given the deficit in FY twenty-five, we have a situation where the education fund is anticipated to end the year with a negative fund balance. Therefore, we are requesting that the board adopt a resolution tonight authorizing us to do a short-term loan from our food service fund, which has over ten million dollars available in that fund, to the education fund to allow for this, the fund not to be negative. As part of the resolution, it does include a stipulation that the repayment will be made to the food service fund prior to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Should we end FY twenty-six with a similar situation where we have the education fund in a negative fund balance? You should expect to see this resolution come again at the end of the fiscal year, sometime around May or June, should we have this, a similar situation.
So again, this was at the finance meeting earlier, as you heard Ms. Amesoul mention. Again, this is just a loan. Again, there's mandates on how the funds in this bucket, so to speak, can be utilized. So again, it is temporary. Should we need to go pass that December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five timeline, you will see another resolution come forward to the board.
You knew you were going to get a question from me. So it feels like kicking the can down the road a little bit. What's the advantage? I understand not being negative, and I understand, I saw the graph, right? I saw all the, the money in one. But it still has to get paid back out of a fund that we're forecasting to not potentially have the money. How does that work?
This is just for us to be in compliance with the law. So if the auditors come in and you have a negative fund balance, you will have an audit finding. So what you are allowed to do is authorize these types of loans so that you do not have a negative fund balance. It is, it is exactly what you said. It's kind of kicking the can down the curb. But what it does is give us the opportunity over the next few years, when we create those budget surpluses, we will hopefully reimburse that ed fund, fund balance, and we will no longer require the loan. But the loan is being done so that we don't end the fiscal year negative, if that makes sense.
If we, weird scenario. So let's say we don't have the money to pay, we have to have the money to pay it back, correct?
Correct. So because we receive our, our levy two times a year, we get an influx of cash at the very beginning of the fiscal year, and then that money is slowly spent down over the rest of the fiscal year. So what will happen is with that influx of cash, we will pay back the loan, and then we'll slowly go negative in the education fund as the year progresses, and we will likely be coming to you again in May or June at the end of this fiscal year requesting another, another inter-fund loan until we actually have enough surplus built up where we reimburse the education fund for, for the negative fund balance.
It's about money timing. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Here we go.
I need a motion to adopt the attached resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan from the food service fund to the education fund in the amount not to exceed five million dollars with repayment no later than December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Lee. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I, I've got one more question. I'm sorry. I'm assuming there's no interest.
There we go. The next item in your agenda would be our FY twenty-five resolution authorizing interest funds transfer to the education fund. So you may recall that we had actually brought this resolution to the board back in June. And as part of that resolution, basically, it allows the board to determine which fund in the district is in most need of our interest income, so that money that we earn on our cash reserves. Back at that point in time, we had determined that the site and construction fund would be the fund in most need because we would utilize those funds then to do capital projects. But subsequently, having discovered the FY twenty-five budget deficit or year-end deficit, we have now determined that actually those funds should not be sent to the site and construction fund. They need to be sent to the education fund, one, to help mitigate the negative fund balance, but two, because that is the fund in most need. So the resolution you have in your board packet, and we are requesting tonight, is a resolution instead of sending those funds to the site and construction fund, to actually send those funds to the education fund. And this resolution has been incorporated in terms of the actual transfers into the fund balances that have been presented.
So as Ms. Amesoul mentioned, we're just reallocating these are monies that we can transfer or move within the district budget. So there's no payback where originally, as Ms. Amesoul mentioned, we were going to put it in capital improvement, but seeing the different need in the district, we're moving it to the ed fund.
Hearing no additional conversation.
Need a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025 resolution authorizing interest, interest transfer to the education fund as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Roll call please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And motion carries. And that will bring us to Dr. Schuth, and it looks like a long list of things, so take it away.
I can batch it all into one major process for you tonight. The first one is a request to approve the master contracts for these companies that provide related services to the district, such as school psychologists, speech pathologists, social workers, transition specialists, and the like. So these master contracts serve as our agreement between Round Lake School District and those companies. And all the subsequent items listed on, below that are the independent contractors that go with those master contracts. So it all kind of batches into one, but we did separate them out so that we could get approval on those independent contractors. So we are seeking approval for the master contracts as well as the individual contracts as well.
So to speak to the master contracts, which is the first one on the agenda, as you see, there's different providers for different levels of service that are being brought into the district. We wanted to make sure each contract with each of these providers had continuity in the contract. So speaking to our payment terms, language as far as background check, certificate of insurance, all that is needed to protect both the students and the district. So Dr. Schuth has worked with all of them so that we can get a master agreement that is consistent and again, across all the different providers that we use here in the district.
Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none.
Need a motion to approve the independent contractors Blaze Works, Insight Global, Milestones, Speech and Language Path, LTD, and Assured Healthcare Staffing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, seconded by Mr. Jewett. Roll call please.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Epstein.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
And motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
So again, the next four items are the independent contracts with each of those services that we just spoke to. So with that, I need a motion to approve the independent contract with Assured Healthcare Staffing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the independent contractors for speech and language services, LTD.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, seconded by Ms. Lee. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the independent contractors from Insight Global.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Roll call please.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion- Need a motion to approve the independent contractors from Milestones.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Epstein.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete-McGillie?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to positive occurrences.
So we have the back-to-school bash, so it was great to see all the students and families back. And I wanted to thank the Athletic Boosters for sponsoring the fireworks show. It's always a family and fan favorite. Of course, we've had, the students are back in school, and we've had open houses for the middle school and high school, and supply drop-off for the elementary.
I had the pleasure of going to the Elote Festival. I love seeing our community representing, because there's so many people from surrounding areas that came. But our kids got to play, the band got to play, and it was amazing. They did a great job. So it was a highlight, for sure.
For me, I got the opportunity to fill in as Lake Division Director for the IASB Board of Directors Meeting for the third quarter. So was able to see somebody in the inner workings of that and definitely appreciated that opportunity for my IASB.
Hearing no other positive occurrences. Anyone have future agenda items they would like to add to future agendas?
I do. I know recently Dr. Tony Sanders, who is our Illinois State Board Education Superintendent, they made changes to the scoring for new assessments. So I would love for that to come back to the board so we can report out how that will affect our students and what that'll look like for Round Lake.
Absolutely. That actually will be rolled into the student achievement update when we give it. So we do have the raw data now, and we'll roll that piece into that formal presentation. He's also visiting the school district, which is on your calendar.
I just want to make sure it's easily digestible for the board and for families and how it affects their students and what these new assessment performance levels will mean for students.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional? Hearing none. Next, I will need a motion to convene in closed session, as permitted by Statute 5, ILCS 120/2, for the purposes of discussing the following matters. Collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(2), litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(11), and closed meeting minutes, 5 ILCS 120/2(c)(21).
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Klinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negrete-McGillie?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will take us to close. We do not have any action after closed session, so we will not reconvene via the video. So that will end the video for the evening. Thank you all for who attended here locally and as well as everyone who attended online as well. And we look forward to our next meeting. Thank you.